This conference will now be recorded.
Hey Steph, do we have everyone? Can't hear you.
I heard I can hear.
I heard I guess. Okay. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Concha Hocken Borough Council due to open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Ms. Checo, could you do roll call?
Councilmember Totino.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin. Ike.
Yes.
Councilmember Flanagan. Jane.
Present.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely is absent this evening. Vice President Sokolowski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Thank you. Oh, Mayor Arrington.
Here.
Thank you.
Vice President Sokolowski, if you could do prayer for council and then follow with the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
Thank you.
O divine master in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel afforded to you, knowledge, and piety. Help us not think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and just grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us for a regularly scheduled public voting session. At this time, please mute your audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the public comment section located on your agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conchaockenpa.gov. A member of the borough administration will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. Thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. Council did have an executive session this evening on property matters. The first item on the agenda is presentations. The first item is the 2021 fireworks event, which we will turn over to Ms. Checo.
Thank you, President Leonard. The fireworks will, the borough will host the fireworks display on Saturday, July 3, 2021. The fireworks will begin at dusk approximately around 9:30 PM. It was of utmost importance that the borough hold the fireworks event this year regardless of COVID and therefore revised event plans were formalized in early 2021 as required by the fireworks vendor. This year, we just wanted, want everyone to know that the fireworks display will be larger than previous years so that fireworks may be visible from as many vantage points as possible throughout the borough. Due to this larger size in fireworks, a wider safety perimeter surrounding the discharge zone is required. As such, Suck Cliff Park and the surrounding areas will be closed to the public during the event. Tests of the larger fireworks play were completed to ensure that the majority of the borough could still view and enjoy the fireworks from outside Suck Cliff Park. So we invite everyone in the borough to enjoy this year's fireworks display. And we hope that you and your loved ones have a happy and safe summer. So July 3, around 9:30, put it on your calendars. Fireworks in 2021. Thank you, President Leonard.
Thank you, Stephanie. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The first item is approve and adopt the May 5 and May 19 regular meeting minutes. The second item is approve and adopt the May ending treasures report and accounts payable. So the first item for motion would be motion to approve and adopt the May 5 and May 9 regular meeting minutes. And I would request a motion.
I'll make that motion, Barton.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ike. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the May ending treasures report and accounts payable in the amount of $557,994.11. Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Sokolowski.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ike. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item under new business is with deep sadness, consider accepting the resignation of councilmember Jane Flanagan. So I would need a motion to accept the resignation of Member Flanagan effective July 15, 2021.
With a heavy heart, yes.
Anita will make that motion. And do I have a second?
With a heavy heart, I'd prefer to second it.
Thank you, Ike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I make a
Motion carries.
I was very, very sad to have to resign. And it has been one of the greatest honors of my life to serve the residents of the 5th Ward of Concha Hocken and to work with such highly competent compassionate council members. So thank you all for your support and the administration, Stephanie and Ray and Mike. It's just been fabulous, fabulous life experience. So thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
You will be
Okay. The next item on the agenda is discussion on the flagpole policies and regulations. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Checo and Mr. Peters.
Thank you, President Leonard. Under council's direction, administration was asked to develop a flagpole usage policy. Administrative recommendations regarding the use of the flagpole at Borough Hall for all flags other than the American flag, the state flag, the county flag, and the borough flag would fall under regulations as such. Only Borough Council may formulate a request for use of the Borough Hall flagpole for any flag other than the American flag, county flag, state flag, and borough flag. The Borough Hall flagpole shall remain in the exclusive control of the borough and will not be open to the general public or third parties. Therefore, no request will be accepted directly from the general public or third parties. And the Borough Hall flagpole has historically and shall continue to convey a message of the borough itself and not that of the general public or of other third parties. Second regulation would be that only flags that represent the official values, policies, and practices of the borough or that conveys an official message from the borough may be raised on the Borough Hall flagpole. All council requests must be reviewed, considered, and approved by full council for compliance with the standards set forth in the foregoing sentence and other policy regulations herein stated. A discussion and vote will take place during regularly scheduled work and voting public meetings. The total number of flag raisings will be limited to a maximum of four times per year or one flag per quarter. Flags other than the American flag can only be displayed for a maximum of four weeks. In instances where there is a formal identified timeframe, week, month, day, et cetera, the flag will only be raised for that designated time period. And requests from Borough Council members will be on a first come, first served basis. Those policy regulations were formulated through discussions with our solicitor. Research was done on neighboring and surrounding municipalities. Discussions directly with council members and our mayor. We believe that those regulations at this time highlight and signify the policies to be in place for the flagpole itself. An administrative recommendation that we would There's feedback. Administrative recommendation that we would ask council to consider this evening is to look into purchasing and installing a wall-mounted staff for Borough Hall. This wall-mounted staff will be positioned near the doorway to Borough Hall, which will be utilized for any of council's flag requests noted in the policy above. This wall-mounted staff would be available for use for all flags approved for the process above by Borough Council. Once this wall-mounted staff is in place, again, flags would be flown at Borough Hall that are approved for the policies listed previously discussed. So in front of council this evening, first would be consideration as to whether or not to authorize a flagpole policy recommended by administration and reviewed and approved by your solicitor.
I'll make the motion to approve the flagpole
And I will second it. Sorry, and I will second it to Tino.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
So the item, the discussion over the flagpole policy was brought to our attention because we received a request to raise the pride flag on the Borough Hall flagpole. When it was first considered by council and the mayor and administration, there was clear support for the pride flag. We felt it prudent to work through a policy in order to ensure that there was, again, regulations around flags and, and, and I think a good solution moving forward to, moving into the future. So the second item for consideration this evening is a motion to authorize the raising of the pride flag on the Borough Hall flagpole for the remainder of June 2021. And if you are so inclined, I would need a motion for that as well.
I will make that motion to Tino.
Second it, Sokolowski.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then the last motion, if you're so inclined, is to authorize the purchase and installation of a wall-mounted staff for Borough Hall to be utilized in the future for flag requests other than the county, state, county, and municipal flag per the approved flagpole policy.
I'll make that motion to Tino.
So we have a motion from Ms. Totino and a second from Ms. Flanagan. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
President Leonard, we did receive, administration received public comments and sentiments of support in favor of the borough flying the pride flag on the flagpole in front of Borough Hall. Given that Borough Council just unanimously approved that request, I think it's prudent to just highlight some of these comments and sentiments. Majority of the sentiments were identical or shared the same notion. Therefore, I'm going to provide a summary which indicates the message that these individuals, whose name and addresses we also will share for the record as it relates to the pride flag and our flagpole policy. So these are, this is a summary of those public comments we received. We are writing to request that the borough of Concha Hocken fly the pride flag on the flagpole in front of Borough Hall during Pride Month every year, including the remainder of June 2021. Flying the pride flag is symbolically important. It shows publicly that we stand with our LGBTQ+ residents and are ready to embrace them no matter what their gender, race, or sexual affiliation. They have a safe and welcoming place in Concha Hocken. The flag must be hung from the flagpole in front of Borough Hall. It would not be appropriate for the flag to hang anywhere else or presented digitally. We have family and friends who are members of the LGBTQ community and they should know that Concha Hocken is a safe and welcoming home to them. By flying the pride flag, we are illustrating that Concha Hocken condones hateful targeting of the LGBTQ community that is trying to push them back into the closet or shadows. It may not be important to you, but if you are male, female, and heterosexual, then you have never had to worry about your rights being taken away because of your sexual orientation, which as we all know is, that is not a choice we make, it's just who we are. Every single LGBTQ person was born into a form of adversity because of continued hate and bigotry that is still very much alive in the world. Yes, things have gotten better. My generation and generations before me have paved the way for so many, but the work is not done. Not too long ago in this country, we were policed as criminal subversives, depicted in popular culture as deviants and pathologized by the medical establishment as mentally ill. It is only recent that gay marriage has been achieved nationally. Gays can openly serve in the military and most gay folks live in states blue that protect them from discrimination. In fact, Pew Research Center reports 70% of Americans say homosexuality should be accepted. This is an all-time high. In the early 1990s, I came out to myself as being lesbian. I was scared of what my friends and families would think of me. No one should have felt that fear because of simply existing in the world. Luckily for me, my transition was okay. My friends all accepted me and it took my parents a bit to accept and support the reality that their daughter was never going to marry or be with a man. However, all through my life, being LGBTQ was a social condition I had to carry around with me. I had to think about when it would be an appropriate time to share this information about me because it wasn't deemed socially normal. More than ever, we are seeing an unprecedented attack on LGBTQ rights from the right, especially towards the transgender community in certain red states. 2021 is considered the worst year of anti-LGBTQ legislation in recent history. To be very clear, these citizens are living in states of imminent danger. This is why flying the pride flag in June is so important. Although it may seem like things are better than ever, we can't stop here. We have to keep fighting and we have to be visible. Numerous towns in Montgomery County have hung the pride flag in 2021, including all Montgomery County buildings and Montgomery County Community College. Flying the pride flag shows that we are inclusive of all groups. This would greatly complement the nondiscrimination ordinance that has been in place since 2011. By displaying the flag in the month of June, we are not saying we are choosing to support one group over another. We are saying that Concha Hocken is an inclusive place to live, work, and visit. Since the borough has already legally declared that it adheres to the values that the pride flag represents, then we should visually, visually display our support. In 2011, Concha Hocken was the second municipality in the county to pass a nondiscrimination ordinance. Immediately, immediately after that, the borough created the Human Relations Commission, which enforces PA antidiscrimination laws and promotes equal opportunity to ensure all persons regardless of relate, race, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, enjoy the full benefits of citizenship. As a member of the LGBTQ community, the passing of these ordinances and formation of the commission were comforting aspects. I knew my town had my back and supported myself and my family. It is time for Concha Hocken to also visually support these groups. I would also like to see flags flown for different minority groups at appropriate times throughout the year. It is important to acknowledge these groups so the members who live and work in our community feel supported by the town. It is important for those who may not feel safe in their homes because of who they are to know there are people and resources that are available in Concha Hocken. It is not just a flag, it is a sign of unity where a person can be safe and supported. We hear the argument that we are all equal and we are all human, but the fact that we need a nondiscrimination ordinance at all shows that this still is not the key to our society. Flying the flag shows that we adhere to these ideals, but understand that we still need to support our friends, neighbors, and family members until substantial societal progress is made. Flying the pride flag also expresses our support to our younger residents that may be struggling to be their true selves. They need to know they have the community's support and parents need to know that the community stands with them in solidarity with their children. It is important to communicate to all residents of Concha Hocken that they are safe and an accepting community and that we stand together. When our community feels accepted and safe, we are all more able to thrive. Flying the pride flag illustrates that Concha Hocken embraces all, no matter their gender, race, races, or sexual affiliation. It is simply the right and moral thing to do. By flying the pride flag, the message is clear. The borough cares. And that concludes the public comment, the synopsis of the public comment that was submitted to the borough electronically. Brittany, at this time, can you read the names and addresses for the record of the individuals that submitted that comment?
So we've received comments on the matter from the following individuals. Christine Bertino, 448 West Sixth Avenue. Daryl Chase, 75 Maple Street. Dennis Hannan, 448 West Sixth Avenue. Holly and Russell, 207 East Sixth Avenue. Jennifer Magliante, Plymouth Township resident. Joseph Albany, 522 Harry Street. Chrissy Campbell, 112 Wood Street. Marlo Domin, 19th, 11th Avenue. Mara Manzo, 240 West Sixth Avenue. Maya Jensen, White Marsh Township resident. Michael Meehan, 301 Washington Street. Michelle Schaefer, 438 West 10th Avenue. Richard Budakavioi, founder of the Montgomery County LGBT Business Council. Sharon Marino, 307 East 10th Avenue. Adrian Serna, 245 East Hector Street. Carol Smith, 109 Maple Street. Hallie Ammon, 218 East Fifth Avenue. Julia Park, 442 East Hector Street. Stacy Ellam, 334 West 10th Avenue. And Tim Beckel, 333 West Elm Street.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you to all of our residents for your support and concern. It is truly appreciated by council. Okay. Oh, there is feedback still, Steph.
I try it now.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, it's perfect, is consider appointing an applicant to the vacancy board. So I'm presenting before council a motion to appoint Holly Holst to the position of the vacancy board chair. If anyone is inclined to make that motion.
I'll make that motion, Sokolowski.
I'll second it, Barton.
All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consider approving hometown heroes banner program. Ms. Checo, if you would like to do that presentation?
Thank you, President Leonard. At our last meeting, we introduced the hometown heroes program. We have some updated information. We circled back with the hometown heroes program itself and the VFW. We are going to, for 2021, work with the hometown heroes organization and the VFW to launch a pilot program. That pilot program is going to be limited to outside the VFW. So we'll coordinate that. The next portion of this is that the hometown heroes program runs on a two-year cycle. So we will formally be introducing the program to the borough. We will be utilizing locations other than Fayette Street so that we are avoiding logistical issues with other banners that are on the street. Walt and the VFW were comfortable with this concept. I think that after kind of driving around and looking at alternate locations, specifically Spring Mill Avenue and some other areas, he actually felt that it was a better location than along Fayette Street. So support from the VFW to kind of change locations or mix locations, just overall productive conversation. So two motions in front of you this evening. The first, if you're inclined, is to approve the pilot program for 2021, which would be subject to final administrative approval and located outside the VFW.
I'll make that motion, Flanagan.
Second, Sokolowski.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then the second motion would be to approve the hometown heroes program for the 2022-2023 cycle, again, subject to final administrative approval.
I'll make that motion, Tino.
Do I have a motion for Ms. Barton and a second for Ms. Totino? All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Brittany, do we have any written comments?
Yeah, I don't have any additional public comments to read.
Okay. And then is there anyone in that has public comment? Any residents? Okay. Mayor Arrington?
Thank you, President Leonard. First, I do want to, I do want to thank council for the seriousness from which you took the flag request from one of our residents, actually from a few of our residents. I want our residents to know that this council and our administration take our nondiscrimination ordinance very seriously, down to our employment application, which, which no longer even asks for gender. So you have a very supportive group of council people, administration, emergency services, and mayor. And your approval tonight of the pride flag just, just furthers that. So, so thank you to council. I, I, I can't say thank you enough to everyone who supported the Arts Festival and Car Show last weekend. I am still recovering, or two weekends ago, I'm still recovering. It was, it was huge. It was all 11 blocks of Concha Hocken. I think we, we all needed it. We all needed a break and to get out and be together and to be out in the sunshine. I have to give a major thank you to Race Sokolowski and the Public Works team. They were absolutely awesome, from blocking off traffic to helping vendors to clean up afterwards. To Chief Metz, police were out there, they were talking to everyone, they were hanging out. They were being great, great community members as always. And it was awesome to see. And of course, council administration, thanks for your vision in seeing that, you know, we were probably going to be on a good path by two weekends ago to have this event. And along with all the future events we're going to have this summer. So, so thank you to all of you and to our residents for attending. And I look forward to a long nap.
Thank you, Mayor Arrington. Ms. Barton?
Yeah, I second that. It was, it was awesome to be back out there and to see everyone. And the crowds were incredible. So I think we all had a good time and it was a big relief just to be outside among people. I really don't have much more to say except yay us on occasion.
Thank you, Anita. Ms. Flanagan?
I also want to say that it was a fabulous time at the car show and the art show. It was so nice to, again, reacquaint ourselves with our neighbors and our friends. And I am super enthused about how the Friends of Country Parks have picked up the momentum. And we had a fabulous raffle and we're looking forward to doing And we had a fabulous raffle, and we're looking forward to doing the same fun day in the Fun Fest. Looking forward to September.
Thank you, Jane. Ms. Tino?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay. Ike?
Yeah, I got something. We were all talking about the car show and everything. How about 4th July? Let's have everybody come out for that, too.
Right.
Absolutely, Ike. We all look forward to it. Vice President Sokolowski?
Yes, in the, in terms of the fireworks, I want to give a great big thank you to administration and the planning committee for the fireworks plan. I had time to actually look through it. And the plan is very thorough from a safety perspective and thoughtful.
It is, yes.
For the residents. So rather than kind of calling out and missing anyone, I think I do want to call out both Dave Lennon and Ray Sokolowski as the emergency management leaders for bringing together a comprehensive team to look at all aspects and to address the needs of the Borough residents. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Tina. Chief Metz?
Yes. You've heard me say it before, and I want to say it again. If you see something happening, call us. That's why we're here. Regularly, things, you know, we, we learn about things happening by people sharing a Facebook post with us or something like that. And it's, it's disheartening, you know. We're here to serve, and we really do want to know when something's going on. It's very helpful. So again, if people witness anything going on or they haven't any reason to call us at all, or think they do, please, call us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief Metz. Mr. Sokolowski, I believe you have something this evening?
I do. Chief Gunning from the Fire Department would have been presenting this or talking about this, but he's unavailable tonight, so I'm kind of stepping in for him. I just want to give an update of the Fire Department and some of the things that have recently happened with the Fire Department, based on our investment in our volunteer Fire Department and in our paid Fire Department. First of all, we had three new members in the Fire Department that just completed 188 hours of training. And that's 188 hours of training required to be a volunteer fireman. So it's on their time that they're doing this. Dave Young, Ian Ashmore, and Liam Schrader just graduated from the Montgomery County Fire Academy. And they're active already in the Fire Department. There was nine new members in the Fire Company. Dave Young, Ian Ashmore, Liam Schrader, Nate Bartholomew, Andrew Koraskiewicz, who also works for the Public Works Department, Anthony Russo, Joe DeWalt, Frank Thomas, and Joe Brock. They, nine new volunteer members for the Fire Department. That is, that's a great accomplishment. We also just hired a new part-time firefighter, Megan Klosterman. You'll be seeing her out and about in some of the public events pretty soon that we're going to have in the, in the Borough. Megan is a volunteer firefighter for the Upper Dublin Fire Company, and she is a full-time police officer for Salisbury Township in Bucks County. So she's a very active person, and she'll be a great, great addition to the Fire Department. I want to bring up an incident that happened in Plymouth Township, a water rescue, and just, just acknowledge the members of the water rescue team that were involved in it. A water rescue happened at 1250 Conshohocken Road in Plymouth Township. On June 9, 9:00 PM, the Fire Department was dispatched to assist Plymouth Fire on a water rescue at 1250 Conshohocken Road. When the Fire Department arrived, they found one vehicle fully submerged with a victim standing on the roof of the car. The water was approximately seven to eight feet. The Fire Department deployed two rescue swimmers into the water while the other members deployed the rescue boat. The subject was secured with a life jacket and rescued by the crew and the boat. They wanted to note that this is the boat that the, they just got the other day from, from our, our, the two, one of the two boats that we got just the other day from our capital budget in 2020. Eight members of the water rescue team, eight members of the water rescue team were involved in this rescue from Conshohocken. Dave Murphy, Dan Casello, Gary Davis, Drew Eggersen, Chris Dixon, Tim Gunning, Steve Young, and Mike Yingling. They are eight of the 19 certified water rescue people that we have in the Borough of Conshohocken. And the only other thing I want to add to this, since 2020, we've had a 20% increase in our Fire Department volunteers. That's pretty much unheard of in these times. So they're doing something right, and we want to continue this. And I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that everything's going good in the Fire Department right now. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ray.
Colleen, can I say something?
Certainly.
Something just flashed across my screen that said Juneteenth just became a national holiday.
Yes, that was announced today.
Was it?
It was passed unanimously by the Senate, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The only thing I have for everyone is I'm going to also wish everyone a happy 4th of July. And a reminder to our council and the public that in July, we only have one meeting, and it will be on July 21. So everyone, enjoy your holiday, and we will see everyone soon. I'm correct in that, right, Ms. Checo?
Yes, you are correct. July 21.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I will say, meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.